All right. Good evening, everyone. So I wanted to give a little more thorough update while we were all together. It saves time as opposed to doing it at the three individual meetings because by the time we get to the third meeting, Dawn is ready to present the report for me because she's heard it twice already. So we'll be a little bit more efficient tonight, so I have lots of updates for you. The first is we had an opportunity for the leadership team to travel into Boston last week and meet with our Boston families. Kate Potter was there as the family friend liaison. We had roughly thirteen members of the leadership team, and I want to say close to thirty parents. It was fantastic. It was at the First Church in Roxbury, beautiful venue. I totally recommend groups thinking about using it as there's meeting spaces, there's large speeches spaces, there's outdoor room, and it was very informal. We did introductions. We did an overview of the equity audit and kind of next steps in terms of things that have already started or have been working on and what's coming next. We provided parents an opportunity to ask questions. There was questions particularly around curriculum to making sure that our Boston students could see themselves in the books that are in classrooms and the stories and the ways that we're looking at history and other questions around guidance support and making sure that our students get to interact with guidance counselors more so than just during scheduled meetings. We get to know them as resources and as support people, so there's not always a purpose to their interactions with with our support personnel. And then we broke off by school, so each school took a quarter and we took the parents that wanted to come chat with us and have further conversations about what we're doing in the individual schools, but also could could talk with with families about their students and how they're progressing and answer any questions that they had. So it was a great, great night, and we're hopeful to do it again. And we've talked that in other districts, school committees have held meetings in Boston. Metro districts have done that, so it's something for you to consider if you'd like to have a meeting in Boston, and I would definitely recommend the First Church in Roxbury as an option. Kate, I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, well, no, just thank you for mentioning that over the last couple of years while COVID aside, some school committees have held their actual school committee meetings in Boston, participating metro districts. So that would be something I'd love for us to consider. And also just to add to what Beth said, it was such a great night, and I know we've done this before pre-COVID, but you know, the Boston students come out here every day, the parents a lot, and even though, you know, it takes organization to get that group of us out there, the parents were so thrilled to have us there, and I guess you and Monique had even set up childcare, so a lot of the kids were, you know, in a somewhere downstairs playing games and having snacks, and it just was a great opportunity. I think the parents felt really valued and and heard, and I think they would like love to do it again.
And also to commend our guidance team, the high school guidance counselors came with us as well and provided some great perspectives to the programming and their interactions with kids as well, so very much appreciated. And I think that there's lots of groups that would like to go out into Boston, so perhaps we have multiple opportunities in a year where guidance can go alone and leadership team can go alone, school committee can go alone. So something to put into the calendar next year, sort of plan it out. So thank you. My second monthly newsletter is due to go out this week, very exciting, so stay tuned for that. In it will be lots of information about the upcoming community forum as well as my entry survey. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute, but keep a lookout, that's that's coming out this week. One of my goals for evaluations is around supervising the principals and the leadership teams, so I am currently meeting with the four principals and the members of central office to do their goal setting. I know Denny had talked about the goals for educators at our last meeting, and so I'm meeting with our principals about their goals, which very much support the educators in meeting their goals to make the students have equitable experiences and high levels of engagement in the classroom, so that's that's ongoing. I've shared with you an update around the disciplinary policy changes around 37 H and three quarters, not to be confused with 37 H and 37 H and a half. But basically, moving forward, students who violate the code of conduct under what was typically a suspendable or even expellable offense. It's our duty now as educators to make sure that we have provided opportunities for students to be educated in that area, to sit with the peers that they may have affected or harmed, and really make it a learning opportunity before we jump to suspending a child for for an event, because giving a child a day home away from school isn't necessarily the lesson you want them to learn from having done something that harms their school environment or their peers. I'm happy to answer questions about that at the end. Emergency preparedness, so our leadership team obviously meets every other week, and our principals not only have done fire drills, they're working on bus evacuations, and some of our schools have done lockdown drills so far, the others are due to do them soon. The next phase of this, Dawn and I reached out to Jason at Synergy, we're going to be having him come back to work with our leadership team to talk about the next phase of this, which is we've done a lot of work with our teachers around lockdown leave live, which is, as we know, is similar to the Alice training and a skill that you can use not only in school, but in the mall, in the church, wherever something might happen, how we can do that in a developmentally appropriate way with our students so that if anything ever happened in school or there somewhere else, they have those strategies at hand and don't need a teacher or an adult to make to make those decisions. He's done that with a number of schools in our area, and we will certainly talk through that very thoughtfully before we engage in that, but that's kind of the next step. When we had our safety meeting at the end of last year in June, we opened up an opportunity for all parents to come and meet with us in the auditorium after we had some online threats to the middle school. That was one of the concerns is what does my child do if there's not an adult to tell them what to do? Because often if you say, what do you do during a fire? You say, well, I follow the adult. What do you do during lockdown? I follow the adult. Well, these, you know, our kids should have these skills themselves to be able to make some decisions in the moment, so more to come on that. And that certainly will not be a training that we roll out lightly. Health and safety measures, so we have held flu clinics and vaccine clinics for our staff, and we have continued to offer take-home test kits to our families, and we will be collecting more of those in a few weeks from the state. Currently, our test kits expire in January, February, so we're getting a whole new slew of them that will buy us another year. So for families who have asked for test kits, we will certainly send them home and continue them coming, or if more want to sign up for that option, we will certainly make them available. Inclement weather could happen any day now. Yesterday it was seventy-five, today it was forty-five, tomorrow could be a snowstorm. So Dawn and I met with our our police chiefs and our DPW friends, and all came together just to make sure that we have the protocols in place about, you know, who's going to start the 2:00 AM phone chain of events to see what the what the roads are like, what the plowing at the region looks like, what other districts are doing. So I feel like we're in a pretty good place. In terms of having a system, obviously, if there is an event that we know is going to happen, we'll call school the night before so that families can be prepared for childcare the next day, and we can have one of those challenge success days where you get to stay home in your pajamas and and do lots of fun things. And we're also going to be walking through our our school messenger system, which is the robo-call, email call, text chain, just to make sure that all members of central office know how to use that, because we have several new members of central office who have not yet used that. So we're getting ready. Denny, one of his passion projects is actually meteorology, which is one of the reasons we hired him. So while he's up with the baby feeding, he can also be watching the weather and helping make these calls. So I'm super excited to have a partner in this this year. And lastly, you know that obviously we are entered into negotiations with our educators, and many of you are serving on that committee, and thanks to Dawn's partnership, we have also met with two of our associations so far to start conversations around the custodial contract and the food service contract. We'll soon be meeting with our administrative assistance union, excuse me, association, as well as the educational assistance. So those are rolling parallel to the educator conversations. Dawn, I'm not sure if there's anything you want to add there?
No, it's, you know, it's early for our associations to kick off. Usually they wait till the educators, so it's it's good that we can spread the work a little bit more. And as I was telling Dan earlier, I think part of it too is just what the current environment, the financial environment, I think it's anxious, people are anxious, so they want to know like where they're going to leave. And they're they're so organized, I mean, you know, we have great groups that work for us, and it's it's an extra work for them, right, to put together proposals, but they do their due diligence just like we want to, and I have to commend them for that. So looking forward to moving that along.
Thank you. All right. Any questions on the general update before I go into equity and the entry plan?
I had to. I was curious about if there were any parent concerns from the Metco family meeting that came up that you wanted to share with us, or concerns or issues or?
No, I think, again, Kate, you can help me here. I think it was a very positive meeting. I would say that there there is certainly, you know, when you when you read the equity report, there's nineteen hundred voices in there, and there are several quotes and vignettes that that talk about students' experiences, and it's one thing to read it on paper, but it's another thing to hear about it from people who either themselves or their children have experienced it. And it was very powerful to be in a room where you did hear certain examples of microaggressions that had happened to our Boston students, and it's a reminder that it's not just paper, that there are people behind those things, and it, you know, really reinforced to me that this is the right work to be doing and that we need to continue moving forward. And there is certainly a lot of interest and strength behind making sure that our curriculum is culturally responsive and that our students have people they can go to and ask for support at any point. Kate, did I miss anything?
Well, no, I mean, you had touched on before wanting the kids to know the guidance team before it was like, oh, you're going to guidance because there's an issue. And so that was raised kind of hand in hand with with discipline, but the, well, somebody, Kate, I guess, explained, we have more counselors in the buildings now than we have had before, and that part of the plan is to have to meet the kids just in a kind of hey, not greet to meet you and get to know you, so it doesn't become kind of a stigma if you get called down or?
Yep, thank you.
My my second question was just about the percentage of families that are enrolled in the COVID test kits. Do you know what our rough number?
I don't. I can get back to you with that. I want to say it's just over a hundred district wide, it's so much smaller than it was before.
You had to re-enroll, so we just didn't care. Everyone knows our, we've got plenty of test kits, so we have them.
Can we get some back? We have so many, we have so many that were never used. And they, I don't know if they expire.
What Dawn and I were saying is that, you know, both of us have been in the two town halls, and town hall has them too, but I'm not sure that they have the boxes that we have, so certainly dropping them there for community members who might want to pick some up.
We don't want it to go to waste, but if you remember when we signed up for this program, we got enough for the people who subscribe every two weeks, and people weren't taking them, so we have a backlog of all of those.
When do they expire? Was it a year after they were made?
Six months after the expiration, so there's an expiration date, but it's six months after that. So right now, we're holding test kits that range from June 30th to July 20th, so we've got six months on those dates.
I would imagine a lot of people probably have some that were not used, because I have that money. I'd imagine a lot of people do.
I have a question on that point. My understanding is for those families who have chosen to opt in this year, the expectation is still that you are going to administer the test as a surveillance test? I thought that was what the paperwork said, that that it was like the idea is we give you these, you give it to your kid on Sunday night, no matter whether they have symptoms or not, and I think a lot of people have sort of moved past that state of things.
Were there two options though? Because I definitely didn't do the one where it was like I was going to do it every week.
I think there was an and if you need it somewhere between Sunday and Saturday, and you needed it, therefore another kit?
Well, what I was going to say is that there might be interest from families to be able to pick them up on an ad hoc basis if there is a sick family member, or you know what, I'd like to have a few tests on hand because there's so many sniffles that are going around that I want to rule out that it's COVID, but not necessarily people that are planning to test their kids on a weekly basis when they're not symptomatic.
But isn't that on a honor system? Like, nobody's checking?
But but I will say, like, having gone through this in practice, it is like, we did get away from like everyone taking a weekly COVID test, but then like when one person in your family gets sick, all of a sudden you have a need for like twelve, because four people need to take them, and they need to take them like every other day, because you don't want to send a kid, you know, with COVID. So I think maybe if we have some communication through the nurses in their updates to say, hey, if somebody in your family's got the sniffles, reach out, because we have tests can send you home with a bag.
Box.
Yeah. Well, because, you know, you want to avoid people we have them, and so they're expensive, and I'd rather not have families in CVS if they can access.
Especially with like? And I think we also want to encourage people, you know, still, don't assume that that, you know, awful runny nose and cough is?
Allergies.
You know?
And so? Do we, I know for the elementary school kids, they're coming home in backpacks. Middle and high school kids, how do they get? Like, I've never seen any from my daughter.
My daughter gets it through her English class.
Yeah, same. So the middle school sends them to a particular class, and they distribute to the to the students who are signed up in that class, the high school. I believe they were trying to have the kids pick them up at lunch, which I think some do and some don't. They're independent at that level.
I do know, though, that, I mean, it was last year, but the nurse and the assistant principal at the high school were super helpful when we went through a little bout of like literally being like, if you want to drive by the school, or I could send it home with his neighbor, like a shopping bag, and it just saved our whole family at a time where we were like, you know, so just letting people know that that resource is there would be helpful, I think.
Did you have another question too earlier?
I did. I had a question on the discipline policy changes which have come down from the state and that are moving us in, I think, a positive direction around ideas of restorative justice. And and I guess I I have a concern, which is that sometimes when a child has caused harm to their educational community, the children who've had the harm caused to them don't really want to talk about it with the aggressor or the person who caused the harm. Is there any, is is this a forced conversation? How do we handle it if, you know, if a child, you know, had did something, had an experience that caused harm, if the classmates or the people don't want to talk to him about or her about it? How do we deal with that with regards to the new laws around suspension?
That's a great question. Ask me after tomorrow's leadership team meeting, and I'll have a better answer, because we have Colleen Ryan Moriarty is coming. She's a, she has many things that she does, including she's a trained mediator and a restorative justice coach. So she's coming to our leadership team meeting tomorrow to kind of give us the 101, so then we can start to roll out more formal training for our for our teachers, and then eventually our parents and students. My understanding is that restorative justice isn't applicable to every situation, and that's one of the things that Colleen's going to talk about tomorrow, is when you use it and when you don't. If you think it's applicable, but then the students who had the harm done to them, if they're not interested, then certainly you don't push the envelope, and it becomes more of an independent learning opportunity for the student who caused the harm.
And I guess that's really what I wanted to ask, to make sure that we're all on the same page with that, because, you know, I have heard concerns from people who are like, you know, like, they already did the mean thing, and I don't want to talk about it. And I think sometimes people do, and that that's important, but it's important to respect the kids who have had the harm done to them, to make sure that we're not, you know, whatever the word is, re-traumatizing them with undesired.
Right.
You know, so thank you.
In fact, I can bring up two points. Thank you for bringing the discipline policy back up. One is to say that there are certainly situations where even the legal documents will say that you do not need to walk through restorative justice and mediation before you jump to a consequence. There are some some behaviors that are just so egregious, there will be a suspension, whether it's short term or long term, so not to take that off the table entirely. And the other piece that just left my mind, I do think that we're going to have to have some conversations with families about this change, because just having lived through the last few years, especially with some online behavior around threats and inappropriate language and the use of slurs, oftentimes when we have a child, you know, committed offense and caused harm to either one classmate or several, there's an expectation from our parent community that the child is going to be suspended, that we're going to make it public who the child is and what the consequence is and how to move forward. And A, we can't do that because of student confidentiality, and B, again, now there is an additional law in place that makes sure that we have other forms of education and learning in place before we jump to that level. So I think this is something that we're going to have to make sure our parent community understands as well.
Do we have the opportunity, or do we utilize in-school suspensions for students who have done these things so that they're not getting the proverbial day off, but they are engaging in learning activities, maybe not including the fun parts of the day?
We have on a case-by-case basis, yeah.
I would think even though you get, even though in those circumstances where it is an automatic suspension or whatever, that a restorative justice process still happens just after.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah, if it's appropriate, for sure. Yeah. Other questions on the general updates?
I have a quick question. So there's for all the other, for the associations, like, are those all different committees, negotiation committees?
So because they're not unionized, they are settled to the superintendent's office.
Oh, okay.
So they have leaders that will meet with Dawn and myself, and similarly, in a process that you're learning through the educational association, they'll they'll sit down with us, come with their ideas, and then we kind of have that back and forth process, and then we'll finalize a contract.
They do come to you for ratification.
Exactly.
Yes, but they'll come to school committee once there's a memorandum of agreement for those.
Okay. Well, we don't have to go through all of them.
Did you want to volunteer?
I'm having so much fun with the one that I'm already on.
Any questions?
I would just comment that I do think communication to the parents about these changes is so critical and that we cannot under-communicate. That's not possible, because even even, and granted, I only have elementary school children, and I've heard, you know, whisperings of high school and what's in store for us there. I think a lot of parents' feedback is sometimes like, well, why wasn't the whole student body informed, or why wasn't there a large meeting about this very important topic? And of course, it's extremely important because it's their children's safety, it's everyone's children's safety, but to really understand there is confidentiality as part of that. There are really thoughtful methods of how to address each individual and nuanced situation, and just to keep on repeating that is going to be so helpful as we move forward.
And to piggyback on that, I think restorative justice process is so much more effective if the whole community is invested in it. It just makes it work a lot better.
And as one parent was saying in one of my entry meetings, it's it's something that parents can use with their students, you know, when when there's something that happens with the girls, and the parents want to sit down with the girls and have a conversation, if you understand kind of the basic components of it, it's something you can use outside of school too. Okay, all right, next slide. It's just an update on my entry plan. So I am, I have completed thirty-nine individual meetings, and I think I have covered my bases so far in terms of those individual meetings. That has been school committee members, leaders, town officials, union representation. I have completed six focus groups with families and six with faculty, so it's actually twelve. I will say there is very positive feedback from the parent and caregivers that I offered a morning, an evening, and a Zoom option for both elementary and secondary, which I'm happy to do. There was also a lot of positive feedback that they liked this opportunity when the entry plan is over, so I'm thinking I'll do it maybe once or twice a year in the fall and the spring, just to listen and hear and respond. That feedback, when oftentimes we talk about how do we get, how do we get people to the table, either for a community forum or for a challenge success event, and so how does that information then carry over to when there's a speaker for challenge success, and they're only here at 6:30 on a Wednesday night, and how can we get other people involved so it's not the same people showing up over and over again? So my guess is that's a rhetorical question that every community struggles with, but I do think it's something that we need to keep in mind of how we get to parents and caregivers who are only available in the morning, are only available on Zoom to those other meetings as well. My community survey is open, the link will be in my newsletter going out, so folks who didn't take advantage of in-person or Zoom meetings will have an opportunity to type in their responses, and Denny and I will be going those through those as we fold our information together. Building and classroom visits continue. I'm still on record of being in every building at least once a week, and I'm hoping that will continue. And then, of course, looking at data, not only MCAS, but lots of different data with our Panorama system, and getting to know the contracts very well, just given the timing, as well as the policies very well, given the timing, so it's all coming together in terms of getting a really good view and picture of what we're doing well and where we certainly need to update and tweak things moving forward. So questions about that? Nope. Okay. And lastly, I just wanted to give everyone an update about the equity audit. So the report is available. Denny and I have met with the leadership team to unpack and prioritize the recommendations and kind of lay out a roadmap of what do we do now, what do we do next year, what's going to be a longer-term conversation, and we're doing that with the four faculties. So three of them we've done already, and the middle school meeting is tomorrow morning at 7:15, and then we'll have the data from them. That said, Denny and I were planning on taking that information of the prioritization and coming up with a proposal for all of you to consider that I will show you in January at our update meeting. It's, in my opinion, really an operational thing in terms of what we've already been doing, what is kind of a high priority that will have the greatest impact for the most number of students soon. So that's why it's been kind of an internal thing, and I will certainly be open to any feedback that you have at the January meeting, and then based on that feedback, that will then roll into the strategic plan that will get finalized next summer as one of many buckets around facilities, 21st century learning, et cetera. The community forum is coming up on November 16th. It's at 6:30 PM. I want to highlight the fact that it's at the Connor Center, it is not on any of our campuses, so it's at Boston College. We have a great space there, and Denny and I have been working with Carlos Hoyt, our former graduate, on the agenda for that evening. It will be an opportunity to hear a little bit about, from Carlos, about this work and what it means, and then we'll be working in small groups to talk about kind of what stood out and what we need to process in terms of the equity audit, and then what is the role of the community in supporting schools and students in this work, and how do we do that in a conclusive, cohesive fashion, and what more resources, training, meetings do we need to make that happen? So that'll be coming up. MTSS, as you know, that's one of our goals as well, is having the tiered systems to support students in academic, social, emotional learning and behavior management. And so the work that Kate McCarthy and Denny are doing in that arena, I think, carries very much over to the recommendations of the equity audit. We heard in our in our last regional meeting, the fact, reminder that we have so many more counselors and student support personnel available, so that work continues, and that'll be something, obviously, that will be a focus moving forward. Denny is very busy planning the professional development for November 28th. Luckily, he did a lot of it before, two weeks ago, and so we're excited to kind of come back together. DEI work has been the central focus of that day for many years, and then the pandemic hit, so this will be an opportunity for us after unpacking the audit at our individual faculty meetings to come back and talk about next steps and start digging into some of the training. So I believe he's starting the day with a student panel, which, as you know, real student voices in person is super powerful, and then the teachers will have some voice and choice in terms of the programming that they get to pick and choose from, and he has lots of people from the community at large coming to offer workshops, including some of our own educators, which is which is great. And then that will continue. There'll certainly be more opportunities for learning, small and large, beyond November 28th. Denny's also luckily started a long time ago working on the curriculum audit. He's going to be supporting our PLC leaders at the elementary level, our curriculum leaders at the middle school level, and our department chairs at the high school level in launching the curriculum audit within their grade levels or their disciplines in January, and that work will continue through the spring. They'll learn to kind of wear that lens when looking at their materials and planning their units, and then moving forward, they'll have an action plan of, okay, what areas do we need to address first, but then they'll always have that that lens or those glasses to wear as they continue this work for years to come. What I'm really excited about is Denny's done a lot of work about making sure that the tool that the educators use to do the audit is specific to their discipline, so math teachers will find value in the tool that they're looking at, because it'll make sense to the work that they do, and science, and English, et cetera. Restorative practices, I talked a little bit about already, so the leadership team is launching our learning tomorrow, and then our next leadership team meeting in December, we have another woman coming who is an assistant principal in Boston and has done a lot of work with how do you balance the restorative practices with the consequence, because sometimes you need both. So we're going to be at that meeting going through a lot of scenarios, and I know that some of our people here have already been sharing practices with her kind of in real time, as Boston is obviously farther ahead than we are in implementing these practices. So we'll start with the leadership team, and then we're hoping this spring to work with, most likely Suffolk University, to do training of our leaders, our assistant principals for sure, our guidance counselors, and then rolling it into some practices for our teachers on the ground level, and certainly education for our parents. And lastly, hiring, we'll be here before we know it. We're already working on the budget, and soon we'll need people to fill those spaces, so certainly thinking about the diversity of our candidate pools and making sure that we have lots of options when choosing the best. lots of options when choosing the best, uh, candidates for our students, um, not only in terms of pedagogical knowledge and curriculum knowledge, but also that our students can see themselves in the adults. And I do think that was one of the points that came up at the Boston meeting too, is how powerful it is when students can see someone that looks like them in the building. So certainly something that we will focus on moving forward, um, and as we start to think about the outcome of the HR audit and the central office audit, if there, we have extra hands on deck to help with that, that will certainly be helpful. Questions there?
I have a question about curriculum audit. I'm, I'm sure we're gonna learn about it more in January, but, um, that's from K to grade twelve, right? And then, um, when they're doing the audit, are they gonna look, for example, for elementary school, are they gonna look at the MCAS scores and see how, for example, in areas that we're not doing well, what are, what are we using, what is our curriculum, comparing it to other districts, and having recommendation for improvement for that?
Yeah, so I think that work is already happening. The principals have the MCAS data from this year, and it was shared with you at your last round of meetings. Um, so they're already working with their PLC leaders or departments and looking at data to see where, what topics did we not cover, where do we need to change?
Yeah.
Um, and certainly that might involve some looking at the materials that we're working, both through DEI lens and through, you know, a subject matter lens. This is more specific about looking at the, um, materials that we're providing to students and the questions and activities that we're providing to students to make sure that, you know, as they talk about windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors, that students can see themselves in the books and the stories that they're, they're reading, that they can learn about other cultures that perhaps they're not familiar with. Um, but also making sure that when we study history, for example, it's not all from one person's perspective. Does that help?
Yeah.
And my point here too is to say that we're not waiting to create a strategic plan to start this work. It's already been happening, and it will continue to happen.
Will there be an opportunity for you to share, um, takeaways, general takeaways from the community forum with us when we meet? Or, that would be great.
Yeah, I think in January, we have a joint meeting that's slated for an update on my goals and an update on the equity audit, so I can certainly hold that in there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth.
Yeah.
All right, um, that brings us to, uh, two policies that we have on our agenda this evening, um, for review. The first is a new policy concerning the use of security cameras in the district. And the second is a revision to the policy prohibiting bullying. And in both instances, we are conducting a first read this evening, meaning that this is a time to ask questions, raise concerns. And then we will follow up with a second read and vote at our next joint meeting in January on, I think, the seventeenth. So, um, turning first to the security camera policy. Beth, I know the policy committee developed this sort of at the request of the superintendent. Maybe you can just give a little bit of background on why, um, we, we've, you know, been asked to do this and, and where that recommendation comes from.
Sure. So, um, as you know, pre-pandemic, we had a security audit, um, at the region, uh, with Synergy, the same company that helps us with our ongoing training. And they had many recommendations, many of which have already been taken care of. Some are obvious, um, you know, with buzzers coming in and out of the buildings and fobs. Um, other, uh, security measures that have been in place, uh, installed are not obvious for, for good reason. Uh, one of the pieces still hanging out there was, uh, the recommendation to put external cameras here at the regional campus um, on both the middle school and high school that will overlook, um, obviously, our open campus, the fields, the parking lots, um, just in, in case there was ever a need for footage.
And so, um, the policy subcommittee, um, took a look at the MASC model, um, and that was the basis for this new policy that we're proposing concerning security cameras. There are a few key elements that I wanna call out for everyone's attention. First is that cameras can only be placed in areas where there is no reasonable expectation of privacy. Um, so as Beth mentioned, you know, I think right now the plan is exterior. If, if there were a time where the administration felt they needed a camera inside the school building, it would only be in a place where there was no reasonable expectation of privacy, so no restrooms, no locker rooms, um, public spaces within the school. The, um, other thing I wanted to mention is that the cameras would capture video recording only, not audio. So it would really just be images, um, that, um, that would be available for viewing. And there would be signage that would be posted that security cameras are in place. And there are obviously a lot of details, um, this is a broad policy that says, you know, we as a school committee understand, um, the rationale and the, and the way in which, uh, security cameras could facilitate a safe and secure environment, but there are a lot of details that will need to be really hashed out by the superintendent's office. Um, and so the policy also provides that the superintendent will develop protocols concerning the use of the surveillance camera system. So things like who gets to view it, how long are the tapes retained, um, uh, you know, all of the sort of protocols on, on the details, um, are for the superintendent's office to develop, and I know that Beth has already begun work on that and begun conversations with neighboring districts, um, many of whom have these. I know that in, in my research and looking at these policies, you know, a lot of our peers and neighbors, Needham, Wellesley, Westwood, Medfield, Newton, Weston, you know, they have security cameras. So, um, are there questions or concerns regarding the topic in general or the specific policy language that's being proposed?
I just would like to, um, understand, um, A, why no audio, and then B, um, why only, are, are the peers, peers that you looked at, are they also only external? And just, just helping me understand that.
Well, no audio is because of the wiretapping statutes. You can't record audio without running afoul of that, so, um, so that's why it's images and, you know, video only. With regard to the exterior, I, I, maybe, Beth, I'll kind of turn that over to you. I don't know whether in other school districts, they're taping outside versus inside. My thought, um, is that the MASC model includes both. There's certainly no mandate that, um, the administration implement both, but we give them the opportunity and that, you know, gives flexibility, um, in the event that circumstances were to change, so.
Certainly, there's a mix, I would say, among the, our local districts and counterparts in terms of who has internal cameras and who doesn't. My understanding that when this conversation came up years ago, there was a strong feeling from the community that we were not in a place that we were ready yet to have internal cameras or external cameras, so this is one step in that direction. Not to say that we won't eventually have cameras indoors, but I think, um, there's more conversation and planning that needs to happen before we, we go there.
Thank you both so much.
Nice. I had a quick question. Is this only for reviewing tapes after the fact, or is there live surveillance that, like, the Dover police?
There will be live surveillance, but there will be nobody assigned to watch it.
But if the Dover police needed to look at live cameras again?
Yeah, exactly. If they got a phone call, they could certainly pull it up.
And this is for all four buildings, or did you say just the region?
It's just the region.
Okay, and why is that?
Well, we may have cameras up, uh, elementarys.
Exactly.
In the exterior.
Oh, so the policy that would cover everybody.
Exactly.
Oh, got it, got it, okay.
So yes, the policy's coming after we have the.
Well, I was thinking, why would we only do it?
No, it's a good question.
Is this policy the same as the MASC model, or did we make any changes?
The only change is we removed a little bit of sort of preamble-type language. I added in the line about no sound being monitored, monitored or recorded. But otherwise, it's pretty much word for word.
Other questions, comments? All right.
Would sound be available, but just not recorded?
Because the rules around wiretapping are you have to preview, in Massachusetts, you have to previously inform people. So you'd have to commit to knowing every single person who might walk by and having previously warned them.
No, I, I understand the recording aspect, but the ability to listen in active surveillance.
You can't do that. Yeah, it's all illegal.
And that's like a Massachusetts thing, right? Yeah.
I don't think it's only Massachusetts, but yeah, it's state law.
It's also a different level of equipment that you would need.
Yeah.
Thank you guys for all the work. I know this has been a large-scale endeavor, so appreciative to all of the members of the policy committee.
I think the policy subcommittee is one of our unsung heroes, unsung heroes.
On that note, Judy, I'm turning it over to you regarding the bullying prohibition policy.
Okay. So in your papers, you have two policies. You have one that's labeled bullying prohibition policy with the, with the file number at the top. This is the one from our policy manual, okay? Then, if you scroll down about four pages or so, you have something called the Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan. That plan is about twenty-four pages, okay? Then, if you scroll back up to the top of the shorter policy, it says that the second paragraph, in accordance with Massachusetts law, the schools maintain this bullying prevention and intervention plan, okay? That plan, the twenty-four-page plan, is what the law in Massachusetts prescribes that we, um, create as a school district, okay? And, and the statute, section seventy, or chapter seventy-one, I believe, section thirty-seven O says, it prescribes a whole bunch of things that have to go into that plan. The district created that plan several years ago. And that's used, that is a more sort of, as, as Lynn told me, an internal-facing document. It's something that's used by the administration to deal with the nuts and bolts of how do we deal with bullying. The bullying, bullying prohibition policy, which is the shorter one that's contained in our policy handbook. Oh, wait, let me back up for just a minute. The plan, okay? The statute requires that we revise the plan every two years, okay? And so this is the year that we're supposed to revise it. And, and the, the plan was created by the administration, and it's the administration who revises that twenty-four-page plan. Do you, well, when we get to it, I don't know if you wanna, do you wanna maybe describe what, what changes? Can you do that? Okay, great. But let me finish my little spiel here. So, the bullying prohibition policy is contained in our school district policy manual, and it's outward-facing. It, um, it says to the community, to the students, to the parents, we have a bullying policy. This is, you know, kind of a summary of what the policy is, but, you know, we also have the plan, okay? So, when I was doing the research and learning about this, I discovered in addition to the fact that, yeah, this policy needs to be updated, and I'll explain to you. I thought you were gonna have a redline copy, but for some reason it didn't seem to get into the package. So I'm gonna explain to you what the changes were that we made. But, I'm sorry, I just lost my train of thought. Um, oh, I know, but when I looked on the school's website, each of our four schools does something different with regard to publicizing what the bullying policy is. So for example, on Chickering's website, the plan is the bullying policy, okay? So my suggestion is gonna be, and this isn't anything we have to vote on or anything, but in conjunction with our current, you know, I'm looking at Angie because I think she's on this committee, our current revamping of the website, that we consider using the front-facing and the back-facing and the, and then the plan in the way that it's used in our policy manual, okay, which is, this is our bullying, bullying policy, and if you wanna see the whole plan, here's the hyperlink to it, okay? So now what I wanna do is explain to you what's not, unfortunately, in the packet, and I'm not sure why, what we changed, the suggestions that we, we, we have to change. It's very little that we're suggesting gets changed this year. If you look at the last sentence of the second paragraph of the policy, we added a sentence that says, if information in this policy contradicts information in the plan, the plan will govern in all cases, okay? Because there's different language, and this is sort of a summary of what's in the plan, but the plan is really the thing that governs. And it's important for people to know that so that, that, for example, parents don't come back and say, gee, I thought you were gonna do X, but you're really doing Y. Y's in the plan, X is in, where they think that X is in this policy, okay? So, so that's why we added that. Then the only other changes were we took out, um, the gendered pronouns and put in, changed them to target or individual or, or, or those things. You know, those words, so that we're non, the non-gendered policy. Is that the right word?
Gender neutral.
Oh, thank you. Um, yeah, yeah, sorry. And we took out the, uh, word headmaster as well throughout the policy. And then we added two sections at the very end, the section on target slash perpetrator assistance and the, and the training and assessment, um, uh, section. We added those because we thought that, that that's what we're doing, and they were in the MASC policy, and they made good sense. So, so what we're, what we're gonna be voting on is those changes. There's one other thing, and procedurally, I'm not sure how we do this. But there's one other change that we didn't make that probably should be made. Um, and I'd like to find a way to do that now so that we can vote on it with this change, if that's a way to, if there's a way to do it, Sarah, you know.
We're not voting tonight, so we would have an opportunity, if the discussion suggests that there should be a change as a policy subcommittee, to revisit this and then put, you know, further revision in front of the group in January when we do our second read and take a vote.
Okay, that's great then. Then the change that I'm suggesting here is if you look where it says responses to bullying and retaliation, there's a, there's a sentence that says, at the end of that paragraph, that says, the range of disciplinary action includes, but not as, not, but is not limited to verbal warning, written warning, detention, suspension. I think, given what we're examining, and Beth, you, you, I'd love to hear your view of this. Given what we're examining and given when I read in the plan about discipline, I think that that's probably a too, um, you know, condensed, too abbreviated, doesn't exactly track with A, where we're going and what we're doing in terms of discipline, and B, what's in the plan, and I think we're better off just relying on what is in the full plan. Oh, good, you're nodding your head, Beth. I'm really glad. So, but other than that, I think the rest of it all makes sense, okay?
Or we say just refer to the plan?
Yeah, or we'll say, um, it says disciplinary action taken will balance the need for accountability with the need to teach appropriate behavior. That's all it needs to say, really.
Is that still true? It's not limited to the bullying?
And, and so, and we don't have to say what the discipline will be, because that's in the plan, okay? Right?
And then that gives the district more flexibility in terms of updating and making sure that things are, um, comporting with the new laws and, yeah. I, I would support that. So just striking the part.
So just striking the part that says the range of disciplinary actions and then until the end of it says long-term.
Yeah, until where it says suspension from school. Yep, just take that out. Okay?
That's a really good point. It doesn't match.
It doesn't need to be there right now.
That doesn't match anything anymore. And I, and I apologize that I missed that on the first go-round with the policy committee, but at least we caught it, you know, now.
Well, in your defense, Judy, the change in the law is literally today, so. Yeah, you did.
Well, thank you.
So in terms of the, um, actual plan that the schools use to carry out the day-to-day, um, that will probably need to be revised less than two years from now once we get further into the work of restorative justice and practices. Um, so it will stand similar to what it is right now. I'll talk about the changes, but there are going to be certainly revisions to it as we get, um, further down this road. Very few changes. I had the four assistant principals review this document. Uh, the names on the front page obviously represent the people in this room. The page number shifted, it's a little shorter than it was. Um, we also removed headmaster, uh, we changed he and she to they. Um, any red lines in the actual school committee policy that needed to be reflected in the plan were made there as well and Judy went over those. Um, we updated the list of activities that we use proactively to support learning and, and being an upstander on page eight to be reflective of what we're actually doing. And then the data form at the end has been updated to be more specific and user-friendly for our building leaders.
I have a couple of questions. Um, so we are revising just the policy or also plan?
The plan, both.
The plan, okay.
But the policy is ours as a school committee and the plan is administration's?
Yeah, we still, on that first page, have to document that it was reviewed or revised, yeah.
And then, uh, for the plan, if we have suggestions, when do we get a chance to, uh, bring it up?
Now would be great because then you can see a more formal version and more final version in January, which again won't be the, the last version you see, but.
Okay, so I had a couple of suggestions, um, in the flowchart.
Okay.
Uh, I think it's page two. So the flowchart, it starts with parent or somebody who reports, right? Uh, who filed the claim or report. And then, um, so for, for me, if a claim is submitted, the next step, maybe it would be better to have documentation no matter where it goes, if it, um, accept, uh, being accepted as a, uh, being a bullying or not. So I, um, I thought maybe documentation after submission of the claim um, would be maybe the next appropriate step instead of, um, having it down here, um, after a situation deemed to be bullying or harassment, then it will be documented. Cause what if, um, I think it's good, if, if there is a claim submitted, there should be a document, documentation that staff, um, accepted and reviewed and then went to other parts of it if it's not, situation not deemed as a harassment or other stuff. And then also, um, when it says situation deemed to be teasing or joking, not bullying or harassment, this is also, to me, it sounds really subjective. Uh, cause I mean, if, if I say something offensive to someone and get, I get confronted, maybe I would just say, oh, I'm sorry, I was just joking. And, um, so I think that's really subjective too. To, um, have a step that, saying that, okay, this situation is not bullying because the person was just teasing or joking. I think that, to me, um, was very, but.
We might think about changing it to meets the criteria for.
Yeah.
Or does not meet the criteria.
Exactly.
Cause there is criteria.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that I, I, I agree with, with Sully in terms of, um, being clear because, you know, it says like using the report form. Well, like when would it be not appropriate to use the report form? Because like if I go to you and I say, you know, I'm, I'm in third grade and so-and-so is bullying me and you investigate it and it's not, we should still like have some mechanism whereby we're tracking that. Because maybe it's not today because it was the one time, but what about a month from now when the same child says, you know, you know, you're fat and ugly and, you know, you're, you know, whatever. Like after a period of time, even though it wasn't the first time, is, do we have a way that we're tracking that?
So I think we should just take out if deemed appropriate to do so because whether it's the child, the parent, the teacher, or the administrator, somebody starts the report form automatically. So the documentation starts regardless. So that should be more clear, I think, in that first box and then it would apply to all three.
Yeah. Yeah. And then it would be kept, like if it's a teasing or joking, which is I think where a lot of those things happen. It's some, someone's keeping a track of like, we had a conversation with the people and we resolved it and that happened in September. So that if it happens again in November and December, now it, it.
It's easier to prove a pattern.
Yeah.
Right, and if you notice on the, um, the actual report form that is at the end, there are definitely, I mean, you're documenting everything, including did this result in, you know, was this deemed a bullying case or was it something else? And if so, what was it? So making sure that the flowchart matches that is important, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then, um, I also had a question about, um, training, staff training. Cause I remember, uh, in our audit, in the, um, equity audit, there was a problem with, um, staff sometimes don't know how to respond to a situation that is kind of a bullying or harassment situation and the staff are not confident enough and don't know how to react appropriately. So I know that we do have training and I don't know if, um, there is an updated training or something that is more, um, advanced and help the staff to be more comfortable with intervening appropriately in a timely manner.
So every, um, part of our opening of school every year, we have a long list of annual trainings that we need to engage in and one of them is around bullying. Um, so that's usually when we try to provide our educators, all, you know, 200 plus educators with most recent updates. Parallel to that, um, our legal office comes and does a training with the leadership team so that we're up to date on all of that as well. I do think that, um, this will be naturally revisited as we roll out restorative justice practices and kind of what is bullying and what laws and regulations, um, are pertinent to that versus, you know, something that can be addressed with a conversation. So I do think it will kind of come out of that.
Yeah.
Um, and I think, um, part of, I, well, I heard two things from the equity audit and I'm sure there was other things to be heard, but around this was one is how staff, um, respond. And I do think that since there have been concerns a few years ago, we have done a lot of training with the leadership team around that. So I'm hoping that there is progress in that regard. And, um, what to do in the moment, whether it's bullying, whether it's microaggression, whether it's harmed to someone. And so, um, that's something we're gonna be working on too with the faculty is what do you do in the moment? How do you address it in the moment? And then when do you follow up with, you know, a guidance counselor or an administrator? Good feedback, fresh, fresh eyes, thank you.
Thank you.
I have another question. So for, for students, is there any specific age-appropriate curriculum, um, teaching them?
Yeah, so at the elementary level, they're, they're using modules from what's called the Fly Five curriculum right now and they're doing that during morning meetings. Um, and then they fold it into the guidance, um, curriculum at the middle school. There's always, could be more.
Yeah.
There's some.
That's part of the law too, isn't it? That we have to annually or more work with students to tell them like, here's what this is, here's how you should, you know, where you can go and, and, yeah.
As we dream of what DS could be like in three or five years, we already started talking about having peer mediators, perhaps even high school students working with middle students and younger students through some of this stuff. Um, so I think that would be super powerful in addition to the, you know, what it means to bully, how not to bully, how to be an upstander, but also having, um, peers being able to kind of problem solve in the moment. Thank you for being so thorough. As a parent, it's important from your perspective to be able to read this plan and, and understand it. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Apologies, in, just to clarify, this is gonna be, this, this flowchart is applicable to the elementary schools as well?
So we'll revisit this in January?
Yes, indeed, that's the plan. So we will strike the language that we talked about in the bullying prohibition policy. And I think that would be the only change that.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, we'll be bringing forward. Well, yeah, I mean, and the policy itself, that's what I'm just referring to. So then, yes, in January, we'll do our second read and we'll take a vote, um, at that time.
And I'll make sure you have a redline copy before then so you can see the before and after.
All right. I think that brings us, that's my.
Consent agenda.
To the consent agenda.
Lots of minutes.
All right, so yes, we have minutes from our joint school committee meeting on September 20th, from our joint school committee workshops on September 6th and October 18th. Are there questions or comments regarding any of those?
I have one on the minutes on the 20th. Um, Gita, you can correct me if you're wrong, but you were present on Zoom that night. Is that true?
I was.
For most of the meeting, yeah.
I was very, yeah.
Yeah, so I feel like we should add her, add Gita to the Sherburne School Committee on the 9/20 minutes.
I got kicked off at the last two minutes, but.
Oh, okay, no, we'll, we'll, we'll update that. The other thing that I noticed on the September 20th, um, minutes, item three suggests that Superintendent McCoy replaced the video presentation that we had seen from the Pine Hill students in, it's from the June meeting. But if, if memory's correct, they had actually prepared news.
Yeah.
Oh, and, and the purpose was new, yes.
They had videoed a new video and we also had students join us, um, live. So I just wanna, yeah, I wanna acknowledge that that was additional work on their part and, um, additional, um, work on their teachers' part. So, um, so if we could just reflect that, um, we were shown a follow-up video, a new video, um, in addition to the, um, presentation that we had at the June meeting. I think that would be more accurate. Other questions, comments? All right. Other than, um, dispelling of my name, which is perennial problem for everyone, um, on the workshop minutes, then I think we're good to go. All right, so shall we invite, um, motions by committee? Um, all right, so is there a motion from the Dover School Committee to approve the consent agenda?
Colleen Burke, second.
Thanks, Colleen, second.
Liz Grossman, second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor? All right. Shall I turn it to Mike?
Sure, um, can I invite, invite a motion from a member of the regional school committee to approve the minutes of those three, um, meetings as amended in this past conversation?
So moved.
Thank you, can I have, see, I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lynn, um, any discussion? All in favor?
All right, Amanda?
Um, and I'd like to invite a motion from the Sherburne School Committee to accept the consent agenda with the named changes.
So moved.
Thank you, and the second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. For communications, um, we have a copy of the signed contract with MASC. I want to thank, um, the three committees for giving their approval for us to move forward with that project. And we now have a signed contract and need to begin our work with MASC. So, um, are there, um, items for the January 17th meeting that members want to raise? It sounds like we'll be discussing the equity audit, um, and.
My goal check-in.
Your goal check-in.
The second read of the bullying policy.
Second read of these both policies, security camera and bullying.
Yeah.
We'll be bringing forward the Conley boss two-year extension, uh, of the contract. We'll do that in January, so we have the numbers approved to continue rolling out the budget.
We'd also like to give you an update. Um, I don't think we've really been able to do a deep dive with the committees around the Panorama Dashboard, which we continue to use more frequently, um, K, K to 12. So we'd love to do that, especially as we consider making it, turning it from a pilot to actually part of our program, which should therefore see shifts in the operational budget in the next couple of years.
I don't know, what meeting do we talk about, the school year calendar?
That would usually be January, too.
Can we, um, if, how do we get that on the, like?
Automatically. Yeah, okay.
Or possibly other calendars.
Yeah. We can work on that between now and then.
If there's something I know to do, there's nothing.
Yeah.
Anything else? All right, well, that concludes our agenda this evening. Yes, we do.
I thought we were just saying goodbye.
No, no. So, um, having gone through all of our agenda, um, I think we can take a vote, all of us to adjourn, I guess.
Analyst consent. Good night.
Thank you, everyone.